Ready? Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, starting session seven, six o'clock. We're running about five minutes behind, so we're gonna need to catch that up before eight o'clock. We have the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, City Stat, City Auditor, Law Departments, Inspector General, the Moet Enterprise Unified Call Center. And that's it. So what we're gonna do is a panel for this one. I'm gonna ask that one representative from each of those agencies, please sit at one of the council members' desks. First, we've got Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee from the Seventh District, to my left. To his immediate left is Councilman Bill Henry from the Fourth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my immediate right is Marguerite Kern, staff to the committee. And then we have, representing the Mayor's Office, Karen Stokes.
Mr. Chair.
Who do we have from, let's narrow these down. So we got Bob from City Auditor, Steve IG. You come up and join us at one of these chairs.
I'm on down.
City Stat, we got Sam. Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications.
Tania.
Yes, ma'am. What's your name, ma'am?
Tania.
Tania. All right. And then Moet Enterprise 311 Call Center. All right. Is that everyone? Okay, so what we're gonna do is, I think we're gonna ask everyone to give a brief five-minute presentation on what it is that you do in terms of accountability and transparency. A number of our council colleagues will be shuffling in the room in the next few minutes. We're gonna hold off on questions until we get through each of these presentations. When you are speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone. The reason for that is this is being recorded, so Charm TV will not be able to hear what you're saying unless you are speaking into the microphone.
It's actually being livestreamed right now.
It is being livestreamed right now, correct. So with that, who wants to go first?
Mr. Chair, if we could go in the order that's up there, it'll be easier just 'cause the slides are in that order.
Sounds good. Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, if you could state your full name, too, Tania.
Good evening. My name is Tania Lee, and I'm the Executive Director for the Office of Cable and Communications, which has responsibility for the operation of Charm TV, Channel 25, Engage Network, the public access channel for the city, Channel 75.
And ready for your presentation?
So, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present today. The Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications' primary mission is around, obviously, accountability and transparency. We do this by providing live coverage of various meetings, hearings, et cetera, across the city. Those are represented by the following entities. We cover city council meetings and hearings, Liquor Board meetings, municipal zoning meetings, Board of Estimates, as well as Liquor Board. That encompasses annually about 6,500 programming hours that we've dedicated to government programming, but in addition to that, we also, for the balance of that time, do do some other types of programming which would not fall under accountability and transparency. And that's typically about maybe 1,900 or so programming hours. I wanna start off in saying that our business, fundamental business in the agency is incredibly strong right now. We're continuing to deliver on all of those programming hours. We also, over the past three years, have been able to deliver that not only on the linear television platform, but also via mobile phones, via the Internet, via livestream, our charmtv.tv platform, which provides a platform. All of this has had a record year in terms of sessions. We're seeing growth of 25% per year on our Charm TV platform. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, despite our limited resources, we do have a very committed staff that has been able to, on the percentage of government hearings covered, historically been at 100%, we do expect that to be at 95 to 100% of those meetings covered in the next fiscal year. The other thing that I wanna point out that is different from last fiscal year is that we successfully, in fiscal year 1017, negotiated a new 10-year franchise agreement with Comcast. That agreement was effective in January, January 1st, 2017. What is significant about the agreement is that it significantly expanded revenues to the city. For example, our PEG revenue expanded from about 60% per subscriber per month to a floor of 90 cents per subscriber per month. And we also were able to negotiate from Comcast significant PEG operating support of about 25 cents per sub, and we're estimating that will contribute to our ability to continue to run the business, to continue to deliver on a lot of things around government transparency without the, with a less reliance, or not more of a reliance, on the general fund. And so that kinda sets up where I think that we are in terms of the agency, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We've been joined by Council President Young, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the Third District, Madam Comptroller Joan Pratt, and Kara Kuntz, who is the Legislative Director for Council President Young's office. Council President and Councilman Dorsey, what we're doing is we're going through each of these five agencies. We just went through the first one, which is Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications. Just as a reminder, we have them coming back tomorrow at 9:00 a.m.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I correct you? There's no such thing as the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication. That's not the name anymore. Ms. Tania, can you tell them what the name is?
Tania.
Who's here for?
I'm here, but I'm not aware of a name change. The agency has been that, but we call the Channel 25 Charm TV.
It's called Charm City TV. They removed the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication. When was that? We'll get to that information, 'cause it's no longer the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication, to my knowledge, and it was changed during the Rollins Blake administration, because that's for the mayor and city council. Mr. Klein, do you have any information on that?
No.
Okay, 'cause we were told that it was Kara.
Yes, sir.
The Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication, that was changed. Do you recall that?
I'm telling you, it's changed. Huh? They haven't changed it. Well, we're gonna make sure that it gets changed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we've been joined by Councilman Brandon Scott from the Second District and Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth District. Next up, City Stat, Sam.
Good evening. Samir Sid, Director of City Stat here in the Mayor's Office. Okay. All right, good. Thank you Chairman Costello, Vice Chairman Pinkett, and members of the committee.
Sorry, Sam, can we flip this slide?
There we go.
Got the clicker for the slide? Anyone?
You guys.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
All right. Good. Again, thank you Chairman Costello, Vice Chairman Pinkett, and members of the committee. Again, I'm Samir Sid. I'm the Director of City Stat here in the Mayor's Office, and very broadly, the purpose of our office is to monitor, evaluate, and hold operational agencies accountable for their performance, to identify potential efficiencies in their management or processes held within these agencies, and very importantly, of recent note, is to facilitate cross-agency collaboration where it's required to solve a problem or to make progress on an issue. So for a little background, Baltimore City Stat program was basically the first of its kind in municipal government. We were recognized as a pioneer in the field of performance management in 2004, when we won the Innovation in Government Award from Harvard's Kennedy School, and since then, our model has been copied by literally hundreds of cities nationally and beyond. Personally, through my tenure, I've seen, I've had the chance to see the proliferation of our stat model firsthand with another group, number of groups, both in the region nationally and even from people from other countries. Moving on to the present, when Mayor Pugh took office this past December, she made it very clear that a priority of her administration was gonna be collaboration, and that collaboration was gonna occur both within city government and beyond. So to fit in with her vision, we've revamped the design of our program and switched from a traditional agency-centric model that, in some cases, tended to recreate silos that already existed within city government, to focus on a model that emphasized issues like blight and homelessness as two examples, that require cross-agency collaboration and coordination to be managed efficiently, or on geographies, and looking at cross-agency interventions in those geographies, like we've done through our Transformation Zone pilot. As for our budget, our office has always been leaned by design. We're currently budgeted for seven positions, which is less than where we were budgeted for when the program was created, but in my tenure here, I at least like to think that we've done a decent job of doing more with less. And you can see that through the fact that we increased our meeting output by 47% during my first year on the job, or by reinstituting traditional transparency practices like posting meeting summaries, which we've done after our program, failed to do that for a number of years. So with that, I'm happy to field questions as they come up or to move along.
Thank you, Sam. Bob, we're gonna skip over you till the end, because you don't have slides. Inspector General, Mr. Lisniewski. And I'd also like to recognize Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the Sixth District.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Lesneski. I am the Interim Inspector General since September of 2016. As you can see up here, the OIG's 2018 recommended budget expenditures is set at $784,0308. This is slightly down from 2017 due to the fact there has been no replacement for the Inspector General's position since his departure in September 2016. In addition, the Office of the Inspector General is presently understaffed with a current vacancy of four agents. These vacancies deeply impact the number of cases which can be effectively investigated, which subsequently affects the resulting outcome numbers of amount saved and amount recovered figures. As the Interim Inspector General, I've been attempting to juggle the demands of both the administrative duties of the office, plus that of the DPW-dedicated OIG agent. The hiring process of additional OIG agents is actually the responsibility of the city solicitor and the mayor, since the recent selection of the new city solicitor efforts have begun to hire a new inspector general. It's important to note that it is imperative that the Office of Inspector General continue at its proposed budget level in order to attract and retain the most qualified candidates for these positions, so as to continually promote the efficiency, accountability, and integrity within city government, and to vigorously investigate any allegations of fraud, waste, and abuse, not only within the various agencies of city government, but also those vendors and businesses doing business with, or seeking to do business with, the city, and also to those individuals, organizations, and businesses receiving some benefit from the city. The Performance Measure Outcome and Effectiveness Target for FY '18 will continue on the same track as FY '17. At this time, the actuals for FY '17 have not been calculated. As shown, you can see the FY '16 figures for both types of performance measures were very high. This, again, was a direct result of the OIG maintaining a full staff of qualified and experienced agents, which we lost over the past year and a half. We anticipate, as cases continue to filter in to our office, that the amount of money saved and recovered in fiscal year '18 will resemble that of fiscal year '17. We also anticipate not only the appointment of a new inspector general, but the subsequent increase of agents to its maximum potential to occur in the very near future. With that, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Moet Enterprise Unified Call Center.
Good evening again. My name is Lisa Allen. I'm the Call Center Director for the 311 Call Center. The Call Center is open 365 days a year, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., even Christmas Day. Our goal is to answer 80% of our calls within 20 seconds. We're under the, this is new, we're under.
I'm sorry, did you say within 20 seconds?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. And that is the national average for what should happen in a non-public safety call center, is 80% of the calls within 20 seconds. As you can see in our slide, we do that well. The, again, Call Center is open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We partner to have good customer service for the city. We pride ourselves in being the one call to City Hall, meaning we get over 3,000 phone calls a day, over a million calls a year, from customers, constituents, and visitors. We answer any question that they may have, and we get questions, "What time does the Raven do the Ravens play?" We get any question from visitors. We also take most of our calls from constituents and customers regarding entering city service requests that they need for their property or for public property, or any questions like that. We then, in turn, can publish, not only when we took the service request from the customer, but through the partnership with the agencies, they also should close out that service request with the appropriate terms, appropriate action that they took, so we can also communicate with the customer if something was done, and making sure it's done to their satisfaction. So that's the accountability piece of the Call Center, but we are there to provide excellent customer service to anyone that calls.
Thank you. And Mr. McCarty?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob McCarty from the Department of Audits. I'm City Auditor. Can anybody see us okay? Okay, okay. The duties of the Department of Audits, which are under the Controller, are prescribed in Article 5.
We got some problems.
Should I continue? Article 5 of the City Charter.
Sure. Might be time to audit software licenses. And we've been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Sneed from the 13th District.
Okay, these duties include the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, which are described in two sections of the Charter, Section 8A2 and Section 9A. The biannual financial performance audits of 16 agencies, they're set forth in Section 8A3 and 11, and that started on January 1st, 2017. We perform audits of city contracts, grants, subgrants, and other agreements per Section 8A5, and we perform other audits as the Controller and the Board of Estimates members may prescribe, may request under Section 8A6. Auditing of the city's operations programs, agencies, provides an independent, fact-based, nonpartisan assessment of cost and performance of government policies, programs, and operations to ensure public accountability, improvement of program performance and operations, and facilitates decision-making. The Controller and the Department of Audits continue to be committed to performing all its charter mandated requirements, and bequest additional funding for staffing for fiscal year 2018 to perform our charter mandated duties and responsibilities. The fiscal year 2018 provides sufficient funds for us to perform the charter mandated audits. Our planned fiscal year 18, try, stop, I'm sorry. You okay? The planned fiscal year 18 financial audits are the CAFR and the related enterprise audits, which are parking, loan guarantee, water, wastewater, and stormwater.
Isn't there a 6-1, parking enterprise and parking management, or just parking enterprise?
Just parking enterprise fund.
Got it.
Okay. The single audit, the Enterprise Free Library, and the eight Group A biannual financial audits, and that's to be done during calendar year 2017. Our planned performance audits so far are the eight, again, Group A biannual agency audits, and we're doing an audit now on the parking tax. Our objective is to provide the most timely and comprehensive scope of audit coverage of the city by deploying audit resources in an effective and efficient manner for all of our audits and responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you. My question is for Cable and Communication. Where was I at? Page 23 in the Volume 2 budget. Under contractual services. Can you tell me what that is, and what it all entails? It's on page, what was it? Contractual services, 26. Well, it was in fiscal 16, 464,000. What does that all entail under contractual services?
To be honest, Council President, I'm not sure what is lumped all in this number. I would have to defer to Mr. Klein and how this number is aggregated.
Okay. Mr. Klein, can you tell me what that is?
What's the page where you are?
Page 26. Contractual services. I can't read this.
I can follow up.
Follow up with us. If you can give us.
Ms. Lee could describe the kinds of contractual services that she uses.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. So can you give us a breakdown of fiscal year 16 and 17, what those contracts were? Because I'm trying to figure out if it would've been better utilized if we had increased staff rather than contract out this work.
Okay.
So if you can give us that information to this committee, I really appreciate it.
Sure.
And also wanna know.
So, Council President, can I just, now that I understand where your question is going, I can't tell you exactly what's in that number, but I can give some color around the staffing level and how we do need to use freelancers. We currently have four full-time employees, that includes myself. We have an operations and traffic manager, that person kinda runs the office and also schedules the various networks that we have. And then we also have two employees that are classified as producer-directors, I think you all know them, Mike and Tim, and they do the majority of, if we need to come over to chambers and run the meetings. They also would shoot any agency projects, that business is really ramping up, as a lot of agencies are doing a lot of production work with us. But as you can imagine, as well as any news conferences that the mayor wants to have covered, as you can imagine, two people is not enough to do that. So we do leverage freelancers in our environment. When I first started a couple years ago, we had an allocated budget of about $36,000. That went down to $9,000 last year, and so there is a lot of pressure on the team to do various things. And so if your question is around, we really only have four full-time employees, but two that do this type of work. And to make it all work, we do leverage freelancers. Last year, we had a budget of about $9,000 just for those freelancers, but that is woefully low.
Okay. And you alluded to news conferences by the mayor. Do the mayor pays for those services? 'Cause we don't get that service. If we have press conferences, I've never seen anyone from Cable and Communication hosting anything or filming anything for us, and we want the same type of treatment.
So, in this year's enhancement budget, we did budget for an expansion of those freelance resources to be able to cover, you know, any requests that we get. We also have.
Yeah, 'cause we have, 'cause we have press conferences, and we have things out in the community as well.
So my expectation, and let me just follow up on some additional things we're planning. We're also planning on enhancing our live streaming coverage, which would include live streaming of events that happen in the field. So one of the challenges today is if there's a live meeting happening, what goes on air is what's happening in chambers, but we wanna be able to enhance the offerings around live streaming field stuff, so that even if it's going on live, we can at least have a live feed on charmtv.tv covering that. The other thing that I wanna end with is, as I mentioned, we do have, we're estimating about $360,000 in additional funding and operating for the PEG channels from Comcast, and it will give us a lot more room to do a lot of the things that you're discussing. We're speaking of.
Okay, because we would like to see the council, when we have events in our districts and in our community, to be programmed as well.
Okay.
Mr. President, the contractual services also includes rent, so we'll give you a breakdown, but rent, I think, is a significant portion of that.
Rent in the building that we used to own.
Yeah.
That, that's the worst deal. I wish I was on this council during that time.
I agree.
I would've raised, holy hell.
Yep.
Now we paying rent, and a building that we own, that we gave to somebody for a buck.
I agree. Number 35 will be a breakdown of what those contractual services are. 34, I apologize. Somehow lost count.
I think it's 35.
It's. We got 34. What'd you have for 34?
34 was the broadband map.
Oh, the broadband map. Yeah. This is 35. 34 is the broadband map. 35, we're bound to forget one of them. Mr. President, you good?
I'm done.
Sam, can we talk about the lack of performance measures for City Stat?
Sure. And first off, one thing I'll say is that, one of the great ironies of running a office that does performance measurement is that measuring the performance of a performance measurement group is actually quite tricky. So, again, and the reason why it's tricky is because we're not necessarily the direct implementer of a service, and so I've had conversations with stat directors in jurisdictions across the state, and they've come up across the same issue. In terms of adding a metric, I've actually talked to the Budget Office about this, and the metric that I at least know I can control is either the number of meetings held or a cancellation rate. And that used to be our metric, and I think for some reason it dropped off, I'm not quite sure on the history of that. But that's a metric I at least know I can control. It shows that there's an output and an effort in terms of holding agencies accountable. So if the question is, what could we do to add a metric, that would be my initial answer, at least.
So you've had that conversation with BBMR, correct?
I have had that conversation.
Is there a reason why that, that metric seems to make sense? I was actually thinking that when you said it. Is there a reason why that's not included in this year's budget book?
I'm not clear on why it's not in the budget book this year. I can capture it.
Mr. Klein?
My understanding is that City Stat, because they're transitioning to a new model, was transitioning in terms of performance measures, so there were none included in this book. One of the measures did use to be number of meetings. Everyone agreed that that's not a very useful measure in the sense that, you know, it's really the quality of the meeting that's important versus the number of meetings, but the answer is that they were in transition, and so we did not have agreement on a set of performance measures for this budget book.
When was the last time there was a performance measure in the budget book for City Stat?
I think we had, I'm pretty sure we had measures in last year's budget book.
Councilman Scott, you still have last year's right there?
I sure do.
If you would kindly oblige and check for me.
Un momento.
Thank you, sir. Sam, are there any other performance measures you could think of that would address the um... Sam, are there any other performance measures you could think of that would address the quality of those meetings or anything else?
Yeah, I mean, again, by nature, I mean, measuring something that's qualitative is kind of difficult to like...
Yes, they are, Sam.
I tend to, you know, prefer something that's at least controllable on my end. I understand Andrew's point, and frankly, he does have a point about kind of our program being in transition because we have revamped the way we do things, and that did cause us to halt for like a month or two to redesign our meeting structure. I'd prefer focusing on, I mean, a cancellation rate is at least a rate-based measure. And...
Councilman Scott?
Yes, sir. There were some performance measures. One was the type effectiveness, percentage of 311 service requests closed on time for City Stat agencies. The target was eighty-nine percent. And another one was outcome, percentage of citizens satisfied or very satisfied with quality of city services. The target was sixty percent.
Perhaps there's a metric that has to do with the percentage of agencies that attend these meetings? Because obviously, if you have the meeting and no agency officials show up, then that's an ineffective meeting versus a meeting that maybe is held less frequently, but you have eighty, ninety, a hundred percent of the agencies in attendance at those meetings. I'm just throwing that out there for your consideration.
I mean, I think that's a fair idea. I mean, I will be honest, in terms of attendance, when we do design a meeting and identify the parties that we expect to be at the meeting, usually there is a representative from those agencies. So, yeah, I mean, something to consider. And quickly to Councilman Scott's reference to the prior performance metrics, again, those were metrics that I didn't think were a fair evaluative criteria for my program because it would essentially put City Stat responsible for literally everything that happens in city government. And so, again, we have oversight over kind of identifying trends in how quickly we're responding to requests, but I'm not personally out there fixing a puddle, so I don't know if it's necessarily the best measure of...
Understood and agreed. Councilman Henry, you had to add on to that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would actually, I know this may not be the most pleasant thing to say at a budget hearing, but not everything is about numbers. In the same sort of way that we do both financial and performance audits, I'm not sure that there really is any, you know, easy snapshot metric that we should be judging City Stat by.
Right.
Exactly the points that you made at the beginning, the point of your agency is to be checking in on the performance of the other agencies. So even if the other agencies get better or don't get better, at the end of the day, that's not necessarily the fault or the, you know, solely the cause. City Stat is a good way of checking in on performance of other city agencies, but I don't know that we should be judging City Stat by a particular number. What I was going to ask, though, is it okay if I go on to the question that I...
City Stat related?
Yeah, it was a combination. It's between City Stat and 311. And it was, it was related to the question, Mr. Chair, that you had asked during the previous panel, where if you have, if a complaint comes in, for example, for high grass and weeds, then, as I understand it, the complaint is forwarded to code enforcement, and they go out, they go, oh, yes, these grass and weeds are indeed, they are indeed high. And so they write a violation notice. And as far as I can tell, at that point, the service request is closed because the city did its job of responding to the complaint that there are high grass and weeds. And my question is, what, you know, whose job does it become to continue to follow that problem from, is that a City Stat issue where City Stat would then go, well, yes, you closed this complaint and wrote the violation notice, but how did we track that the inspector went back ten days later and saw that the, you know, high grass and weeds were or were not mown? If they were not taken care of by the property owner, then did the inspector put in a work order for, you know, some other agency to go out there and mow it? Did that other agency ever actually go out and mow? How is that, how is that follow-through done? And is that a City Stat issue?
Partially. So that is, that's a specific issue we've focused a lot on because it does represent kind of a process gap. And so we have other measures beyond 311 that we look at, and one of those measures specific to vacant lots is how, what percentage of the time are we on time in terms of re-inspecting a vacant lot? And so that's one way we get at it. And we've done some other things in the past. You know, one issue, you mentioned it, kind of, you have a high grass and weeds issue. It might be on private property, for example. And so the best we can do is send code enforcement out there. They write a violation notice, but, you know, one thing that we kind of identified through our process was that there was a closure notice going out to the resident. What we worked with Lees's shop in 311 on is to at least add a violation number to indicate to the resident that something had been done to address the issue, even if it wasn't something that we could get at and actually fix. So again, you know, tracking kind of, making sure how many work orders are being put in by the code enforcement folks to solid waste where it is something that we can get at, and making sure that the resident knows that there was a reactive action to the service request, even if it wasn't resolution is something we worked at.
I guess one of the things I'm curious about then is, let's say, for example, that I disagreed and that I thought in a situation where the complaint is for high grass and weeds, that it shouldn't be marked closed until the grass and weeds are no longer high. So like, how do we get multiple agencies into the process so that it's not actually closed out until it is re-inspected at a legal level?
Well, and again, sir, just like we talked about with the last hearing, it is the process, and it is the responsibility of the agency to make sure the process is followed a hundred percent of the time. Because you're exactly right, we can...
I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off because there's multiple agencies involved. And right, so if, but who is, who is making the decision as to what point that complaint is marked closed?
The agency is.
Pardon?
Because the agency, they're out there doing the work.
So, so, but in this case, since it requires the code enforcement, and then once code enforcement has given, has inspected it twice, code enforcement passes it off to DPW for mowing?
Well, it depends. If it's private property...
Let's say it's private property.
So we give the, we also give the owner, we have to give the owner a chance...
Right, so that happens between the re-inspections. I mean, the two, between the two inspections. So, but what I'm asking is, who decides what the policy is going to be for that kind of complaint? Like, somebody had to decide that we're going to mark it closed as soon as code enforcement does the first inspection. Who made that decision?
And again, not to be redundant, but it's the decision of the service request owner, which is the agency.
Okay.
In my agency, and everybody knows I say this, close means done. Close means closed. I don't care how many steps are in the process. The agency gets, different agencies can get different tickets, and at that point, when it's in their hands, they're responsible for doing what they're supposed to do. Until, like you said, the grass is cut, the caller and customer, it shouldn't be closed.
So if I wanted this, that kind of complaint to not get marked closed until after the high grass and weeds were actually cut, the first step would be I would have to, I would have to get housing to agree that as code enforcement, they would not close out the ticket upon initial inspection?
Correct. That's the way we would prefer it.
And then can 311, under its own power, can you move that service request number from one agency to another agency?
That isn't our responsibility. Once we put it in, and we don't close tickets either, a lot of people think we do, we close no tickets. The responsibility of the agency is to determine, because we're not out in the field, determine what needs to be done, take action, and pass it on to the next agency or close it if you deem necessary.
Sam?
So, yeah, I know there's been issues with transferring the exact same service request number, and so there's two schools of thought on this, and we've discussed this a lot. And so, one, you could keep the request open and transfer, but we've had technical issues related to that, I think, at times. And I think part of that might be addressed with the new system that we're rolling out.
Okay.
The other thing, and I think the approach that is probably easier to execute, is to customize the message that goes out to the resident when something is closed and to inform them, like in the situation that we're describing, that this request is being closed because a violation notice has been issued and that the request, that a new request number will be opened up for a high grass and weeds to solid waste. And that way, they can follow kind of where it's going through an automated communication. And I think, from what I've seen and what we've talked about in terms of the new sales force system, there's going to be the ability to at least deliver a more specific message so that the resident knows why something's being closed as, you know, beyond just the request being closed, if that makes sense.
And again, though, the agency will still have to follow the process to make sure that they're taking the appropriate steps to make sure the customer gets that message and the message is correct.
Okay. I think I have enough to start.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm happy to discuss this with you offline. It's a, it's a healthy issue.
It is.
Bob, I got two quick questions for you, and then I'm going to jump over to Councilman Scott. The first one is, you and I have talked in the past about this issue with the grants management audit with respect to the circulator. Can you, can you give me the thirty-second summary of that? You know how the city is required to, by the, the auditor is basically saying you will not get a clean opinion unless you pay back the deficit on the circulator system? Is that correct?
I thought we had worked that out, but...
I thought so, too.
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
I'm referring to the overall grants deficit of which, of which the circulator deficit is a part.
Okay. We have a modified opinion on the overall grants fund.
So a mod...
And that's part of that.
Okay.
But it's not the deciding factor of it.
So if that doesn't, if the action that Mr. Klein wants to take is not completed, that does not impact our opinion in any way, shape, or form?
No, it does not. At this point, things could change, but for fiscal year fifteen and sixteen, it probably wouldn't change.
And this is part of, I mean, we're being told by the auditors that we need to, we need to pay off the grant deficit, and this is, the circulator deficit is part of it.
It is part of it, yes.
So how, I don't know how you can say that has no bearing on our...
On the modified opinion. I was talking about the modified, right, it doesn't. There's other issues besides that.
But that is, that is an issue. I mean, we're...
It is one of the issues, yes.
Yeah.
But resolving that would not change the modified opinion.
So then...
Not by itself, but...
By itself, right. But they say he's working on fixing the whole situation, yes.
Right. But that, paying back that deficit, and I don't understand what creative way that Mr. Klein over the years has decided that the circulator would be funded, but paying back that deficit does not change that modified opinion. Therefore, that modified, or therefore, that deficit does not need to be paid back. Is that correct?
The deficit is not, I can't give an opinion on the deficit needing to be paid back. I was just talking about the opinion itself. It wouldn't affect that.
Who's the, who's the auditor?
It's us and for fiscal year sixteen, is that what we're talking about, or fifteen?
Well, now it's sixteen.
Very, sixteen. SB and Company.
Let me ask you this. SB and Company and whoever SB and Company's predecessor was in partnership...
KPMG was...
KPMG. Did they issue that same opinion about that deficit?
SB hasn't issued fiscal year sixteen, it was their first year.
Okay, but this was raised as an issue.
Probably in fifteen.
Sorry, I didn't ask the question the right way. Please bear with me. In previous audits, was this issue raised that there was a grant deficit issue that the circulator system was a part of?
Yes, they were a part of the deficit, yes, for the grant fund.
So that, that's been an opinion every single year that the circulator's been in existence?
The first year would've been fourteen where we had the modified opinion.
So, Mr. Klein, what you did was conveniently go back and prorate that to the beginning of the circulator system in 2010? Because if the deficit was $3 million per year, fiscal fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen would have been a sum at best of $9 million, but you have stated on the record on several occasions that it's fifteen or sixteen million.
The deficit has nothing to do with the audit. The deficit is, we spent more than we've taken in, in the special fund, and that's part of the grant deficit, that the auditors are saying, you have, you've got to pay that down.
But the auditor didn't have a problem with it the first four years of the existence of the circulator?
That, well, but...
Because the deficit wasn't material for those years, before fiscal year fourteen.
So if the deficit wasn't material, then the deficit wasn't an issue, correct, Mr. McCarty?
Correct.
So therefore...
For prior to fifteen.
The deficit couldn't possibly be fifteen to sixteen million dollars, as you've stated on the record.
It is. That's a fact.
But the portion of the deficit which is required to be paid back, per what you've said, could not possibly be the fifteen to sixteen million dollars of this quote-unquote deficit that you claim exists?
We need to, we need to cure the grants deficit, and this is part of it.
That's true. We do need to fix the deficit for grants, special fund grants.
But again, this wasn't, the circulator portion of it was not material for the first four years.
Of the overall grant fund, right, correct.
So I don't know how we get from zero to fifteen or sixteen, even though you claim that there's a fifteen to sixteen million dollar deficit. No public transportation system in the world that I know of. Councilman Dorsey knows a lot about public transportation, and I don't think there's any public transportation system in the world that runs in the green, but I could be mistaken.
Well, they're subsidized, so...
Right, because they're intended to do things like...
They are being funded, so this is our, this is our subsidy.
Yeah.
It's just coming after the deficit has been accrued.
That's also known as spurring economic development or being for the public good. That's why we, that's why we fund those things. So how big, what portion of that deficit needs to be addressed of that grants deficit? That total deficit's like eighty million, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, I don't know the current sixteen numbers. It's around eighty million, yes.
Okay.
I can get back to you in exactly a year.
Yeah, number thirty-six, if you could, Bob, kindly, if you could get back to us with what the total deficit is and what portion of that is the circulator?
Yes, I can.
And lastly, if you could break that down by year for the circulator, just so we have an idea of which years it was, it was an issue as part of that modified opinion and which years...
Hey, which years you talk, how far back are you talking?
Well, the circulator has been in existence since 2010. Kara, does that sound right? If we could go back to fiscal 2009.
Okay.
And the second question, this one will be much more brief. When, when the CAFER is completed, and that's done, that's a joint effort, right, between the city auditor and a private?
Yeah, yes.
And who's that? Is that...
For fifteen, as I said, it was KPMG, and this is the first year for SB and Company for sixteen.
So they do the grants management audit, and they also do the CAFER, right?
I'm not sure the grants management audit, I'm not sure which...
Oh, that's, that's part of, or the grants piece of it is part of the CAFER.
The single audit?
Yeah.
That's a separate, that's separate.
Separate.
And we do that alone.
Yeah, the grants is part of the single audit, which looks at the federal grants.
Federal financial assistance only, though.
Got it, okay. So my question for you is, in the CAFER, and this is something that the President and I have spoken about at length, does the CAFER look at every single account that Baltimore City Finance slash Treasury slash et cetera has access to? Every single, like, operating and capital account?
Yes, not a hundred percent. We do samples, but yes.
But it looks at every single account?
Yeah, all material accounts, yes. If it's a ten-dollar account, no, but all material accounts.
What is, how do you define a material account?
It's a calculation based on various factors, but I don't know, I don't have the limits in front of me or anything. I can get that for you.
For number thirty-seven, could you get back to us how a material account is defined? And the reason I'm asking that question is, I'm curious if the CAFER has identified every single account that Mr. Klein has access to?
They all are covered under the, under the CAFER.
Can, as part of that, number thirty-eight, can you extract a list from the CAFER of every single one of those accounts?
A list of all, for just the current year, or...
Uh, yeah, just current year. Uh, yeah, just current year. Or, or last year of completed CAFR, which would have been 15.
Okay, 15, okay.
Yep.
Yes, I can get that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know you'll find it a bit relieving that I will not be talking about the circulator anymore today. I want to go back to City Stat. Mr. Director, you know, I believe that City Stat is a very useful tool for the city of Baltimore, especially when it comes to holding the agencies accountable. However, in previous budgets, but also in previous years, the Office of City Stat had inspectors who would go out to check the information provided to you and the rest of the City Stat team from the agencies to make sure that they were true, because I think we, we all can agree that sometimes agencies don't tell the truth. However, looking at your budget now and looking at their staff positions, I do not see an inspector in there. So I just, I'm very curious to see who you have in the field that's verifying the information from the agencies, if there is no inspector, because if there isn't anyone in the field to verify whether they're saying whether it's true or not true, then it seems that it makes your job a lot harder to be, and for you to be effective at that job.
That's a great question, and I think what you're saying is, is fair. In terms of inspecting the actual closed service request, we do get at it a number of ways, or at least two ways that I can articulate. The first, I talked about doing more with less. My analysts, even though it's a small group, will get out there on a spot-check basis when they have time. It's, again, we're not getting to nearly as much as we could, but we do do that in certain situations. The second thing, and I know I presented before your committee back in February on our Transformation Zone pilot, and this has been something that we worked with the Police Department and essentially across city government to get off the ground. And one of the things that we've done is, we've had neighborhood coordinating officers positioned at the Baltimore Police Department, at least within those zones, putting in service requests and then flagging every time those service requests are not actually addressed. And then we will literally go through those meetings, throw up the pictures of an unresolved issue after the fact, and hold agencies accountable for that. And we've seen that work, at least in that small pilot area. Our, our closeout rate has grown to 98% on time in each of the four zones in April. And then even beyond that, we're seeing less of a volume of requests that aren't necessarily resolved the way we'd consider something to be resolved. So, in short, yes, we're getting at it in some small ways. To the broader question, resources to inspect would, would certainly be helpful, but it, it's not currently what we have on the books right now.
And thank you. This is a follow-up. Mr. Vice Chair, is that, that position total was about $80,000 when you add with the person made up, and there was just one. Actually, the gentleman still works for the city, works for Safe Streets now. But that's not your analyst's job. Their job is to analyze. Their job is not to go out and to inspect. You're inspect, you should have an inspector to inspect, and you should have an analyst to analyze. Moreover, and actually, I don't want to get too deep in it, we're going to talk about that more at the, in the, during the Transformation Zone hearing when we reconvene you guys. It's also not the job of police officers to be putting in 3-1-1s. Those agencies that are supposed to be working with the police in those transformation zones have people that are supposed to be there anyway. That's not their job. And this is what we're, what I'm getting at is that the purpose of your office is to hold people accountable. And if you're not being given the tools to do that, we shouldn't reinvent the wheel for you to be able to now work your already overworked staff who are getting this data and information from agencies to have to then get out and go out and check to see, because the way that position is done correctly, it's not always right when there's about to be a City Stat. It could be on a whim. Someone calls in and says, hey, city workers did A, B, C, X, Y, and Z. You call the agency here, they say, no, that's not true. The inspector goes out and boom. That's how this is supposed to work. And I think that we're being very cheap, and, and when we're talking about just a 80, $90,000 total position, when you include benefits to cut us out, and it'll save the city a lot of money. And why, why are we not making that investment? If we're going to say that City Stat is important to us, then we need to make sure that they have the staff and the tools available to them. And Mr. Klein, do you know, I know it was fiscal, what's this, fiscal 2016, when they lost their inspector's position? Do we know the reasoning behind why?
I, I don't recall, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Director, my last question for you is, how many agencies are, are coming, can you provide a list of the agencies and all the stats that you're running currently? And most importantly, will you be bringing back GunStat for the Police Department?
Sure. So currently, we have, in addition to the Transformation Zone meetings, which we're, we've been covering two zones a week, we have six meetings that we've created in our, our Phase One, two that look inward and look to kind of standardize best practices, and that's our operational liability and our fleet meeting. We have a permitting meeting, a homelessness meeting, a meeting on blight, and a meeting on maintenance. So that's, six is a starting point. GunStat, again, I think was a, a really valuable tool. I would like to bring that back on, but right now, I'm trying to get us kind of like acclimated to our first six meetings, and GunStat's something I would certainly consider bringing back on in an effective way moving forward.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, if I could, Mr. Klein, could you have, provide for the, the committee, just have a look back in the budget and see how much that inspector position was total in the budget and provide it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 39, which inspector position?
So, oh, you missed it. City Stat no longer has an inspector, so the director is now depending on the information of the agencies, of which we know very often don't tell the truth, and to hold them accountable, which he cannot do with just the information. He should still have the staff to send people out that work directly for him in order to check the information that they're providing.
So, number 39. Councilman Scott, you good?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. No, I got this. My questions are for the Office of Inspector General. There are, I understand, some positions in your office that are not accounted for in this budget. Three positions. My understanding is that you have seven positions funded, is that correct?
Uh, we-
Some positions funded through your office, but others that are funded through other agencies. Are they accounted for in this?
Uh, yes, they are. Well, actually, we have one position that's funded through an MOU for Department of Public Works. That's actually the position that I'm in, but I'll be transferring to another agent at the end of the fiscal year, this fiscal year. We have a, we have a position, an MOU position for Department of Transportation that will transfer to a new agent in the next fiscal year, okay? We have an MOU for police and fire, the employee retirement system. That is a one-year MOU. We do have an agent assigned to that position. The only position that we do not have an agent for that's open is police and fire, workman's compensation, that's presently vacant.
So those positions are all accounted for in-
Talking to my councilman.
Those positions are all accounted for in here, or are they accounted for in, not in those agencies' budgets? They're here?
They're, they're in there.
The, Councilman, the, there's funding in the other agencies' budgets that they transfer here, so you'll see here, there's a credit equal to all of those payments.
Okay.
The positions are here. Funding is in the agencies that are, that are providing it to support the inspectors.
And so you say, thank you. So you say, you said that they're transferring to other agents. Does the Office of the Inspector General make those hiring decisions or who they are, or does that come from those agencies?
No, that comes from the Office of the Inspector General himself.
And do we have, I saw that 16, we saved 8.3 million?
Yes.
And can you explain the difference between amount saved and recovered due to investigations?
Okay.
And amount of annual waste identified and reported on in dollars? And how does, I don't understand how that gets calculated.
Okay, amount saved and recovered, the actual, is the amount that we receive as far as, for instance, in 2016, the reason it's 8.4 million, we had a large investigation that concluded on the, what was it, the, the garbage disposal, the trash site where they were-
The dump.
The dump. Not the transfer station, the one in the under-
The bribes at Quarantine Road.
Correct, correct. And we were able to, that case went to court, and the Quarantine Road landfill is what I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, we were able to assess, after all the prosecution of each subject, came to 8.351 million dollars. Now, just because they were sentenced and ordered to pay restitution, that's not all going to come in that year. So it'll come over the course of a couple of years.
And the amount of annual waste identified as a, is a separate line here?
I do not, is that in the?
It's in the, it's in, it's on page 245 in Book Two.
Okay.
It says, "Amount of annual waste identified and reported on in dollars, FY16, actual $531,506."
Uh, yes, we base this on the, the case assessment of what we've, for instance, theft of time from employees who steal time. We have a-
Kind of a stop-loss assessment?
Exactly.
The value of that. And do you, do we have any accounting of, like, where those agencies were, how many employees that involved? I, I guess a kind of a per-agency breakdown of where the office has been particularly effective, particularly considering that we have these three inspectors designated by these three agencies, DPW, DOT, and the Fire and Police?
Yeah, historically, the OIG and the Inspector General did not break that down by agency. I mean, it's something that, you know, we, we certainly could attempt to implement in, in going forward.
I would like to have a breakdown of where we've seen this in a better effort to hold these individual agencies more directly accountable without having to rely on the OIG to strong-arm into honesty. So if we could, I don't know what number on, 40?
40.
Number 40.
If you could summarize real quick.
A, a breakdown by agency of where these stopgap, these savings were found as a result of Inspector General work. I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask Ralph to come up here? David Ralph? Can I ask him to come up?
Mr. Ralph, can you come up for a quick second, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot?
Sure.
Thank you for indulging me.
Sure.
David Ralph, acting solicitor for the timing?
Yes, correct.
Is it possible to provide us a list of settlements made, like, let's say, over fiscal, or actually, going back to January 1 of 16?
Sure.
Just a line item list, the amount of money and what the settlement was and the date?
Sure.
Okay. And do you have a forecast of upcoming settlements that you expect?
Within what period of time?
Um, like, let's say, a, a upcoming six-month forecast?
Uh, no. I, settlements typically, I would be able to project perhaps a month out, and that would be a really rough figure. Settlements are negotiated. So, you know, it depends on how those negotiations go. Six months out, no.
So there's really no, there's, there's no known methodology for predicting out? Okay.
No, because you have cases that have varying amounts that they're seeking. Those cases aren't even up for negotiation yet. Depends upon facts that come out as the case progresses. And, you know, the strength of the plaintiff's case, the strength of our case, those are too far out to project.
Got it. Understand, and completely makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Ralph.
Thank you.
So 41 is from the city solicitor, itemized list of all settlements since January 1, 2016. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question related to Charm TV, and this is from Mr. Klein, and, and I apologize in advance if I'm just completely off. But, so when I look at the general fund contribution to this activity, I mean, there is a decrease in the, in the, I'm sorry, page 27, Service 876, and Volume Two.
Yep.
So clearly, there's a decrease in the general fund contribution to this activity. But when I look at the agreement with Comcast, the half a million dollar annual agreement, and then the, about $461,000 in the subscriber fee, why isn't there a greater reduction in the general fund contribution? Or is that just, it, I don't, it just, I don't know, it just seems like there would be more of a reduction?
Yeah, the, the mayor is interested in using the, the additional funding from Comcast to expand the programming. So we, we funded the, the general fund level is current level of service. You know, there's no, we're not making a service reduction there, and then the, the additional Comcast operating funding will be in addition to that.
So, I mean, but that's almost, that, that's almost doubling what was, you know, you know, traditionally or originally budgeted for, for this activity.
Well, $100,000 of the 461 is designated for-
Oh, for the wrecking parks and-
Wrecking parks and HCD. So we're talking about $360,000 that would be for additional programming. The, the base general fund amount really just covers the, the meetings, the, the public meetings. And so, this would be to support original programming. The original programming that's been produced, that was produced in the past, actually led to some deficits in this agency, and so we want to ensure that that doesn't occur again.
Okay. Yeah, just, and, thank you for that explanation, but it just seemed like we should see more of a reduction in the general fund contribution based upon, I mean, why, why get the additional money from Comcast if it, if it doesn't yield a savings?
Councilman, I'd like to respond to that as well. So I think it's important to understand the history of this office, which is an office that, at its height, was 13 people, and literally has absorbed an additional network and multiple platforms with a third of the staffing. And so, there has been a track record to meet the demand of all of these entities, notwithstanding original programming. There is never enough money that's been funded. And so, as we've gone through this tremendous transition in platforms and offering HD, we significantly improved our competitive positioning with Comcast to be able to negotiate those funds, those additional funds. And there really is no way for us to meet the demand that everyone asks of us at the general fund level without literally going over budget. So either we're going to be honest about going over budget or not be honest about going over budget. But in addition, there's some significant enhancements being made, being made to coverage. There's some, there, there were some misappropriations of things that we need to support the website that we thought would be capital that are actually operating expenses. So there are a lot of costs that when you really true them up and look at really what does it take to- does it take to run, we do need those additional funds from Comcast.
And so you're saying that you'll need these additional funds, you know, now annually? Or is this just like a, a one-time infusion, and then next year we can cut?
I would say for next year, council president has requested council coverage. We actually do have a program where we really want to spotlight council people in their districts. That costs money. We're making some additional investments in the live-stream capabilities. Longer term, we may not need access to all of that, but we're really kind of trying to catch up to where we should have been and need those additional funds in the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you. Miss Lee, you reminded me when you said that you'd absorbed another network.
Yes.
To check in with you on how the city is now managing public access cable. And I would also question whether absorbed another network is really the best way to describe it, given that the public access channel that I think you're referring to is supposed to not be run by government. And so that's, could, could you talk a little bit about?
Sure.
What firewalls are in place to make sure that the public access cable is still really public access, even if the city is taking a greater financial responsibility for making sure that operations are consistent?
Sure. So let me give a little bit of history. So the city did have an operating agreement with a third party that expired in the summer of 2015, so they were out of agreement for about a year. After going through a due diligence process, the city decided to terminate that operating agreement. At that point, my office has had to absorb the day-to-day. We did put out an RFP, looking for another third-party entity to do the day-to-day management of the public access channel, and we actively tried to meet with people and literally got no submissions, because one of the things that third parties ask for is operating support, which we don't have operating money really to support. We could offer them capital support, but we don't have operating money. So today, the day-to-day is that we have hired a freelance scheduler that kind of schedules the network. If we're asked to continue to absorb it, we do want to resume training so that we can train citizens to offer more content. And we're, we've, we've, we put out a bid, accepted, and got some proposals to relaunch the website. But if you're, you're asking me if there's literally a wall or a separate office for the public access, access network today, there is not. And without additional resources for it to really scale in our environment, we have to share some intellectual capacity amongst the networks.
Mr. President?
Oh, thank you. Can you tell me some of the things that the capital money can be used for?
Sure. So if you read the franchise agreement, it's specifically stated in the PEG section of the agreement that it's to be used for PEG capital or infrastructure or technology resources for those broadcasting of those channels. So I will tell you, historically, what we've used it for, it are to upgrade this chamber, or to upgrade board of estimates. For any other cameras and equipment, we pay for a lot of fiber. If we have to do anything in the field or upgrading, we've installed a asset management system, which allows us to, any archive that we capture, any other entity in the city could leverage it. We could just, we would search it and provide it to you. So those are some examples. It's my understanding from council that we hired as part of the franchise negotiation process, that this is an FCC mandate on how the capital funds are used, and that they're only earmark for the functioning of the PEG channels. So in my tenure, we've probably spent about, in upgrading various things, maybe about, I would say, $2 million or so.
Can that money be used for Moet that really your agency used as well? Can that money be used for capital improvement for Moet with their fiber and all that little stuff?
Um, I, I'm not an accountant, so I can't truly answer that, or I, I think 100%, but the way I would think through that is, for example, my environment needs a lot of fiber, probably needs an atypical amount of fiber than any other entity. So if there needed to be a chargeback, I think we could cover that for, for our agency. But I, but I think another opportunity to the city that I know the city of Philadelphia has leveraged, when we were going through the franchise negotiation process, Comcast did invite the city to convene some meetings around offering an institutional INET. I know the city of Philadelphia has done that with Comcast. I think there may be some opportunities to, for us to have faster pipes, to do a lot of the Wi-Fi things that we want to do and going that path. I don't know a lot about it, but that is a path that I would explore to see if, how those funds could be used.
Okay, would you get back to us and let us know?
Sure, I can do that.
Oh, we're interested in that. And also this mic system inside the chambers, where are we with that?
Um, we are, I know that you love the chamber at Howard, in Howard County, so we're actually going to do a site tour to see what they actually have in terms of the wireless mics. So that's in early June, and then we'll be able to assess what we can do to get it to where you want it, like it.
Okay, these mic systems suck, see?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't hear you, because...
I've been, I've been on this for a number of years. Your predecessor, everybody else, they said they had, you know, contracts, RFPs out, and then I found out that nothing was out.
Well, I, I do just want to add that what I commonly hear is, in a dense city like this, one of the concerns that we have about going into a wireless mic system is the feedback. So we just need to investigate how we can resolve any feedback issues before we fully commit to a wireless mic system.
Okay. Thank you. What's the, what's the status of the mic system? I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. No, I'm just kidding. Councilman Henry, tough crowd.
I hear you breathing out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, just following up on that, you can see, if you just sort of look down on the floor, what the wired microphone system, I, I, I'm not against wired mics. I, I think that there's some, like you said, you, you get some benefits by not having to worry about what can happen with the wireless ones. But if they could be wired to a spot right there next to the desk, instead of a spot somewhere else in the room, as you can see, like, right here, in order to get microphones for the panel, we have to pull microphones from those desks over here. So does that, if, so when you, when you make those upgrades to the microphones, that can be done using the capital money?
Absolutely, because the programming that we are recording is being distributed over the PEG channels.
Um, when you, when, when, when Charm TV began to livestream its, its content, were the capital investments in that, were they able to be paid for with?
Yes, if, if, if there's a kit or an actual device or something, but the live-streaming service fees that are monthly fees are charged as operating.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's anything else in the realm of what else could we own that right now we are paying to rent from someone else in operating that could be, could be paid for out of this capital? Is there, is there equipment that we could use to be our own ISP, such that once we owned that equipment and we could do that ourselves, we would not then have to charge, I mean, we would have to pay someone else to be streaming stuff for us?
I think we probably would need to explore that with accountants and figure out how the end costs would be capitalized or booked. But hypothetically, it doesn't sound that far off. For example, something very unique, so we are very aware that there are a lot of needs for more opportunities for our youth. So one of the things that Charm TV is investigating is a youth content aggregation play that will be digital. And so if we were able to move forward with that, we would launch a website, and typically website costs at launch are capitalized costs. Now, the street service fees ongoing would be booked to operating. So we're, I, I think that tangentially, as long as we can connect it to, back to the PEG station, or that in some way we're rebroadcasting that content over the PEG station, it might be something to explore.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a really quick question for, for Charm TV. Is there, is there a way for citizens to submit proposals for programming on Charm TV?
Oh, absolutely. We run a crawl, so anyone that has a programming submission can just send it to charm.tv@baltimorecity.gov. And last week, we did have a city employee brainstorming session, but citizens are just asked to send an email, and then we add it to our list of options.
Okay, thank you.
Your turn. Colleagues, any... Colleagues, anyone else? Thank you all very much for your time and service to the city. We're going to go into recess until 8:00 PM sharp, or if DHR gets here earlier at that time. Thank you.
If you guys could get over here, we'd appreciate it.